Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, September 18th, 2023. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on March 31st, 2023, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on March 31st, 2023, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on March 31st, 2023, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider when making their decision, and the decorum must be appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Barillo has been excused. Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. Orozco?
Here.
Mr. Stanton has been excused. Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Rubell?
Here.
And Chairman Seiya?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Everyone, please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Andy, can we have swearing in of the professionals, please?
Yes, you swear the testimony. Do you choose them all to use or nothing but the same? I do. Please state your name and address. Call, phone.
Samuel Bakian.
The professionals are sworn.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Eileen, do we have any approval of minutes?
We have no minutes this evening.
Do we have any vouchers?
No vouchers.
Do we have any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Okay, item eight on the agenda. Resolutions, case number BA 19-25, Brian Mayer. Resolution granting extension of time for the use variance, bulk variance, and preliminary and final major site plan. Eligible voters: Barillo, Hughes, Mertens, Orozco, Rubell, and Seiya. May I have a motion, please?
Motion, second.
Okay, we can... Roll call, please, Eileen.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Rubell?
Yes.
And Chairman Seiya?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. Applications before the board. Case number BA 13-05A-2, Calgo Gardens. Type is an amended use variance, amended preliminary and final major site plan. The description: Application of Calgo Gardens as applicant in Sacks Realty LLC as owner seeking amended use variance and amended preliminary and final major site plan approval to bring the property into compliance with the prior zoning board approvals granted on October 22nd, 2013, and January 9th, 2017 on premises known as Block 178, Lot 30, 462 Adelphia Farmingdale Road. This application was scheduled for July 24th, 2023, when it was carried to September 18th, 2023. Expiration date, September 30th, 2023. Andy, who do we have?
I believe you have Mr. York on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, Mr. York?
Yes, we do have Mr. York. For the record, Harvey O. York, Novans York, Jacobus and Dooly, representing the applicant. As has been written to the record, this is an application, which my engineer is going to dump on the ground, but it's an application to, I would say, correct deficiencies that have occurred over a period of time. Our client received several approvals in the past, 2013, 2017, resolutions of approval, and they required certain things to be done, some of which were done, some of which were not done. And then my client did some things that probably required additional permits which he neglected to invest in. We are here today to solve that problem. We have reviewed your planner's letter and your engineer's letter, and they raised valid points. Understand that there's nothing vicious or malicious about my client's actions. It's a mom-and-pop operation trying to survive in a unusual economy where people in the landscape world tend not to have large tracts of land, farms with greenhouses. They tend to be a Mr. Lowe's and Mr. Home Depot, not this type of operation. Your last resolution in 2017 recognized that and actually gave permission to do things on the site in order to keep flexibility and the business active. It has been difficult, but again, we're here tonight to go through all of the proposed uses and to set the record straight and to come up with a, hopefully, a resolution, and not in the term of a piece of paper, but a resolution of all the open issues. Let me start by saying weddings are out of the question because every letter I've gotten said, "Are you doing weddings?" They put it on their website. Should never have done it, but there are a number of things my client should not have done. So let me start our hearing by apologizing for some of the things that have occurred. None of them were done maliciously or, I will say, crazily. The actual construction that was done on the site was less than 500 square feet of buildings. It's not a... You know, he didn't go and try and put up 1,000 or 1,500 or 2,000 square-foot building. He put up a greenhouse, he put the yurt where it shouldn't be, and did some other things. I'll call them things because we'll discuss it and we'll go through it with you. But we're here to set the record straight and to do the right thing. At this time, I'd ask our engineer to be sworn in.
Thank you, Mr. York.
If you swear the testimony, you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God.
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell your last.
Brian Murphy, M-U-R-P-H-Y.
Witness is sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, please put your credentials on the record, please.
Sure. Licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been before this board, the planning board, and about 100 other boards throughout the state have been accepted by the courts. I'm principal at FWH Associates in Towns River, and I'm graduate of New Jersey Institute of the College.
We accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Brian, would you describe to the board where the property is located within the municipality, and do you have an aerial exhibit showing that?
I do. The first exhibit would be an aerial exhibit of the property. Property is indicated red roughly in the center of the map. It's six and a half acres. It's in the ARE2 zone. It's along 462 Adelphia Farmingdale Road, and it is Block 178, Lot 30.
I'd ask that it be marked A14?
Yes. If you... Would you like the handheld mic?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
And Mr. York, you're more than one of the people that you want to use that mic, either one of you.
Nah, you know what? At this point in my life, standing's a lot easier, and I'm happy to be standing.
Okay, then just use the mic.
So I keep standing.
Mr. York, we're gonna mark...
Yeah.
A14.
We have that one.
Nope, he didn't bring anything.
A15? Sure, it's sheet three of nine? We already have that marked?
No.
Technically, it is marked. Mr. York, just for the record, too, I'm sharing near-map aerial imagery for May of 2023. I think some of the exhibits Mr. Murphy has didn't have a thumb drive, so I'm just sharing it for the public.
No problem.
Sure, thanks.
He didn't put anything on there he shouldn't have, has he?
No, no.
Just checking.
A16, the sheet four of nine, just a color rendering of that sheet. And the last sheet, if we needed, is just the street view pictures of the site.
A17. Thank you. All right, going back to A14, which is the aerial view, in response to my first question, would you describe where the property is located, what's there, what's not there?
Sure. To the north and west of the site is a township-owned property. It's basically farm, old farmland. To the south, there's two single-family residences. There's the elementary school and the municipal utility authority as well. To the east is the VFW, a vacant piece, and then there's a... To the northeast corner, there's two single-family residents as well. On the property is the current Calgo Farms. There are numerous buildings on the property. There's a barn, there's a number of greenhouses on the site, a number of sheds. The main part of what we're going to be discussing is up along the... Adjacent to the roadway, which is really kind of the retail portion of the Calgo Gardens site, and we'll get into that further as we go along. And again, it's roughly six and a half acres in size.
On your site plan, your colored site plan, is there a... Now, the next one. Is there a chart delineating the various uses?
Yes, there is.
And that exhibit that it's located on is A16, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have copies of that chart?
I do.
Brian, did you... Oh, that's... Okay. All right. We don't have that, right? Okay. Thank you.
I haven't heard if there's enough.
You got three? We can share, and you guys can share.
You should have made enough so everybody has one. Everybody.
Mark this?
I think it's on that.
It's on the... It's part of the existing exhibit, A16. On the upper right-hand side. Brian, would you describe what is part of A16 and its labeled property uses chart?
Sure. This was actually through discussions with Jen Beam to avoid any future problems on knowing what's permitted in each building and exactly what's permitted on the site. So to try to pin down exactly what will occur on the site and what's permitted, we've basically provided this chart, which indicates the building that it's located in, the use, the general operational hours of that use, and a basic description of what occurs in that And I can go through each one if you'd like, or we can just put this into record.
It's in the record, but would you go through A15 and describe to the board what is there, what is not there, and how we got where we got?
Sure. So you'll notice there's two colors on this plant. The blue is what was approved at the previous application. The red is what has been built. So there was a yurt, which is that circular blue circle on the plant. That is now moved down to the more centralized area of the site. Exact same yurt that was approved, it's just at a different location further away from the main building. The Tulip Tree Cafe was constructed. The parking lot was constructed. There was a walkway that was going to go from the parking lot to the front entry. That was not constructed. Instead, the red parking lot was constructed out to the front entry. There was a greenhouse constructed to the east of the retail shop and to the west of the main building that's in the center of the property. That's the rectangle in red, so to speak. And by greenhouse, this is a glass greenhouse. There's only plants in it, so it's completely transparent. And again, it's basically just hanging plants and plants that are growing in there. There's also a accessible route from the handicap stalls on the west side parking lot that runs into the doorway to the retail center. And then there's a walking path that goes from that area up to the front entry again. The last portion that was added is there are mailboxes actually out in front of the center of the building, and rather than keep walking a trail, they put a sidewalk pathway out to the mailbox so they could access the mail.
Now, referring to the property uses chart, now that we've explained what's on the site, would you just very briefly describe the various uses, what is in existence, and what is proposed?
Sure. So what's proposed that wasn't previously proposed, previously approved, rather, is that new greenhouse that I discussed. There's those walkways that I indicated. There's a shed that was installed roughly in the center of the property. That's only for farm use for equipment, just to get it closer to the field that it's maintaining. There's also a generator that's proposed to the west side of the existing main building between the greenhouse and the main building. Yep. That is also proposed. There is a trash enclosure that's existing on the west parking lot, and we're just basically relocating that to be behind the greenhouse that's there. It's basically hiding it from view, essentially. And the last portion is the relocation of the yurt from where it was going to be behind the main building. It was basically brought back to more centralized area of the site.
And that's been constructed, right? Is that correct?
That's correct. All of this has been constructed, except for the trash enclosure that hasn't been moved yet.
Is any construction proposed as part of this application?
Just the... Just the trash enclosure.
With regard to the uses, now, some of those uses were not permitted and some are pre-existing.
That's correct.
Would you go through the property uses chart?
Sure.
And just briefly describe what is... You don't have to read all the details, but give an idea to the board of what was approved, what is in use, and what is proposed.
Sure. One second. So what was originally approved is obviously the farm use, the landscape business that's on the site that operates out of the site. There's a gift shop, yoga and wellness classes, the Tulip Tree Cafe, classes and events, and by that, you know, the Rotary Club meets here, there's numerous classes and events that they have for the local schoolchildren. Classes come here, learn hydroponics and plants and bees and chickens and everything else and how to grow plants. They work quite closely with the elementary school. There's holistic and wellness programs that occur on the site. There's events, the cafe. Catering services are permitted out of the cafe. There's numerous workshops, building birdhouses and bee houses and basically plants, how to prepare plants, cooking workshops, farm-to-table-type workshops as well, and of course, we have the various seminars that occur on site as well. The things that are new, so to speak, from the prior application is there's a reiki room, which is massage and aromatherapy, and Susan Estman has a counseling out of this building as well. Both of these, we feel fall under the health and wellness category that was previously approved by the board, and these are both evening hours so that they don't conflict with the main operation of the site. Also, farm-to-table dinners, which occur three to four times a year, and basically what that is, it's outdoors, it's about 15 to 20 people, it's all basically vegetables that are grown on site, all the cooking's done in a portable pizza oven, and basically kind of go through that process and have dinner on the site. The last one that wasn't originally included is photography, basically pictures of the events that occur on the site, and also, you know, they provide services for, you know, if you want to take a wedding picture out there or graduation or engagement pictures, you can do that on site, you know, in a rustic atmosphere of the farm itself. Again, all these, we feel, fall into the categories that were previously approved and that they're in relation to the site and supporting the business that's on the site, the farm on the site.
The operation of the cafe, is that changing?
No, same cafe, same operation.
And that's listed in the property uses chart, and everything that is listed in the property uses chart is defined, clearly defined, and the hours of operation, is that correct?
That's correct.
Would you describe the farmer's market, the artist's festival, and the nonprofit events?
Sure. There's numerous nonprofit events out at the site. Again, all profits, all profits go to the charitable event that's on the site. Their biggest one is there's an arts festival out at the site. The last time that... This was previously approved also, but the board had concern about safety of people because they park over at the elementary school coming across. Part of the agreement would be that we would hire police to basically direct traffic and help the pedestrians cross, which we do do, so that's going to continue. And that basically supports local artists, you know, varying from typical art to crafts, pottery, you know, all kinds of art in the surrounding area. They provide... Help the food bank, caregivers, interfaith hospitality, Chamber of Commerce, as I indicated, musicians on a mission, veteran care services, and various churches and synagogues in the area, basically to support, you know, events for them as well, for charity events.
Now, with regard to the fact that this is a D variance, would you describe how this fits into the prior approvals? And for the record, the board has on two occasions previously granted the use variances or the special reasons variances, is that correct?
That's correct.
And in those resolutions, they've taken a very expansive view of the uses, is that correct?
Sure.
Would you describe to the board how we are now approaching it?
Sure. I'll cover the other variances that are in here as well so that they're all together rather than breaking them all apart into pieces. We obviously have the use variance, which are the uses that I'm indicating that are up and above a farm use. Again, there's a process, on-farm direct marketing. Basically, it promotes farms, it allows them to direct sale to consumers, and also to have products that contribute to the farm income. Because again, farms are very cyclical, you know, down with the times, it's very hard for them to survive uncertain economics. The state recognizes this as well, and that they're really kind of the driver behind the on-farm direct marketing, and all those uses are basically in support. The board previously agreed with those findings in granting the use variances that are currently on the site. It's only those three or four changes in the application that we're looking for approval for. We also have a couple of other variances from Section 188-63D. That's basically materials and structures within the residential buffer. The residential buffer that I'm referring to is that front yard buffer, since there are two residents across on the other side of Farmingdale Road. So that variance is for the greenhouse that is located within the 50-foot buffer. Again, it's set back about 40 feet. The building next to it is roughly 38 feet. The reason why these buildings are where they are is because originally we had another 10 feet along the road. The county came and took 10 feet away from the property, so we're now deficient roughly 10 feet along these areas. There's the walkway to the mailbox, as I indicated, the walkways to the entry doors to the southwest shop, and the walkways that run from each parking lot into the main access area. And each one of those, again, are for access into the property, they're at ground level, you know, so they're essentially invisible from the roadway going by. The only thing that is visible is the greenhouse, which is between the two buildings, and again, it's clear glass, it just has plants in it, so it's not like it's a solid structure that would be aesthetically unpleasing. Also, Section 188-11B is a front yard variance. That is for the greenhouse. Again, it's modest in size, it's only 257 square feet. It is clear. Instead of 50 feet, we're 40 feet off the front setback. Again, the county took the 10 feet off the front of the property. If they didn't, we'd be compliant, and also, we're actually setback from the building that's adjacent to us already. So it's not like this is sticking out in front of all the other buildings. It's kind of even or a little bit back actually from the other buildings. There's three existing variances that we would look to continue, and that's 188-63E, as in Edward. Again, that's the four-season buffer along the front, six-foot-high berm or 10-foot-high fences and walls. Of course, the 10-foot-high fences and walls wouldn't be permitted in front setback anyway. And again, you know, it's really no impact. The front of the site is very attractive. Being a landscape company, they've landscaped the property pretty well, so it's... I don't see any purpose in basically building a berm or completely obscuring the view of this building out on the site. The other variance is 188-226E, as in Edward, three-foot-high hedge between the parking areas and the streets and sidewalks. Along the west parking lot, sorry, the driveway basically would prohibit us from really planting anything there because the parking lot basically goes right off the driveway. Along the east side parking lot, that has existing vegetation there, evergreen trees. There you go, you can see it in that shot that runs along it, so we feel that that satisfies or more than satisfies the three-foot hedge requirement as those are roughly 10 to 12 feet in height. And existing Section 188-226F, as in Frank, five-foot landscape strip along the lot frontage. Again, it's existing condition, it's landscaped, we have a nice grass area there, and obviously the walkway going out to the mailbox that you can see. That gazebo that's shown there, it's basically a truly branched, constructed, that's been removed, so there's no variance requested for that anymore. There was another variance that was indicated, which is they weren't sure whether it was a variance or not, which is for the walls that are in the front yard there. They're only a couple feet high, so if they were over six feet, then we would need a variance, but they're only a couple feet high, so there's no variance associated with that.
And that's all the variance, is that correct?
That's all the variance.
Has the applicant sought any waivers?
Yes, we have a number of waivers. Waiver for parking stalls 18 feet deep instead of 19. Again, all the parking stalls exist. They were previously approved at 18, so we're requesting to keep them that way. The utility department fees, there's nothing that we're proposing that would require utility. A waiver from EIS, again, the site's totally disturbed, national resource inventory, storm order management, it's all privately owned and nothing we're doing is going to impact the storm order management. Traffic import impact report, again, there's no real impact to what we're proposing. Written description and meet and bounds of all easements, again, we would ask for a waiver from that. The architectural plans, soil borings, which are not really impacting anything, woodland management plan, we're not removing any trees, maintenance and production of traffic plan, again, the site, what we're proposing is really not impacting anything on the site. Profiles and cross-sections of all streets, we would ask for that waiver as well, and profiles of all utilities. Our utility profiles were provided with our prior application where we were actually doing some utilities. Maintenance and production of traffic plan, again, the site, what we're proposing is really not impacting anything on the site. Profiles and cross-sections of all streets, we would ask for that waiver as well. Profiles of all utilities, our utility profiles were provided with our prior application where we were actually doing some utilities. There's no utilities proposed with this application. And that's it for the waivers. Again, let me just get into the... All these really support the economic feasibility of the farm and supporting the farm to be survivable in tough economic times. The site provides sufficient space and proper location for development, and that the workshops and wellness initiatives promote health, education, welfare, all of which serve the purposes zoning, as a special reasons in support of the application. All the uses are essential, essentially accessory uses in support of the farm as a complement to the zone scheme. These variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the zone plan or master plan, as the board recognized last time. The board also previously discussed whether the applicant should be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. Again, the board at that point had a concern about the traffic, you know, during those larger events, and that was addressed, and the board agreed if we provided the police the guide traffic, that would satisfy that condition. So we're obviously going to continue that condition. And again, I see no detriment to granting this application.
With regard to the approval in 2017, there is language in the resolution, which I quote, "The board agrees with the applicant that all of the uses, including the proposed yurt, will serve to make the applicant's farm more viable in difficult economic times. As such, the purposes of zoning are served," and it goes on and on. Is there any change to that rationale at this time?
No. Again, I feel that the uses that we're proposing fall under the health and wellness, and also, you know, really, the photography is really just another supportive angle to the use.
And all of these changes do not create a substantial change in the use of the property, do they?
That's correct.
They're all minor changes and do not increase the flow of traffic, or business, or anything else?
That's correct.
And has no negative impact on the surrounding properties?
It does not.
I have no further questions of this witness.
Mr. York, are you going to have any other professionals?
No.
Okay. Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to try to just give a little overview of like, what was approved and where we're at, and Mr. Murphy did a good job of that, but I'm just going to do it again on the screen here. So the parking area that's constructed, it's by and large the same configuration, there's some slight alteration. The handicap parking was, I believe, originally supposed to go on the southwest corner of the parking area. There was supposed to be a sidewalk connecting into the building with an ADA accessible ramp. That configuration has been changed lately, it's all been built, as Mr. Murphy said, it's been existence for at least probably two years, if not longer. The number of parking spaces hasn't changed to what the prior approval was, it's just they came here for the configuration. If the uses hadn't changed, and there wasn't some additional activities, I probably could have approved all that administratively, but once you start adding different uses that weren't specifically listed in the approval, that causes some challenges, right?
That's an interesting way, challenge.
Yeah, yeah. I thought the resolution was very liberal in what was...
I agree.
Along the property frontage, as Mr. Murphy alluded to, there's a slate walkway that goes to a mailbox in the front that wasn't on the prior plan approval. This slate walkway also linking the front entrance way to the cafe, and this paper patio in front of the retail shop, that was added originally, it was supposed to be a concrete sidewalk or asphalt sidewalk through the drive aisle coming into the back of the site, and then also this greenhouse with associated paper patio wasn't per the prior approval. So that's what they're here to, you know, legalize today with this application. Those improvements that were constructed without any approvals, there wasn't any pre-construction meetings or anything like that, you know. Had they gone to the town and went through the proper means, we might have been able to head off a lot of these things, but they're here to legalize them today. And then obviously, you heard Mr. Murphy talk about the proposed generator. The last piece of the puzzle is this yurt that's been constructed south of the large stone area, that's got a number of activities, I guess, that are ongoing out there. The original location for that was immediately to the south, southeast of the parking area, and the relocation, the reason the location was there was, I think the board had asked about ADA accessibility the last time that that was here, so there was a walkway tying it into this parking area for ADA accessibility. So that's something, obviously with the relocation, there's a paper walkway here, but, you know, length of distance from an accessible walkway is pretty far. Would the applicant have any issue with installing like, a handicap space adjacent to that?
Yeah, we can either provide a handicapped access pedestrian path, or something along those lines.
Yeah, or a walkway to one of the, you know, whatever's the least path of resistance, I would say.
That's fine.
A couple of the questions, so I think you provided a very comprehensive use chart here, and a couple of them were ones that I had brought up in my review letter. So Mrs. Esteman, she does, what kind of services does she provide?
It's basically like marriage counseling, that kind of thing. Again, it's only a few people a month. Some of it's actually online, where she just goes in from the office and does online from the office, sometimes they have clients in. And again, it's off-hours, it's evening hours.
So it's not a, you know, full-blown medical office where people are coming every forty-five minutes?
No, no.
Okay. The yoga activity, so previously, the yurt, the reason, I don't know if it was the 2017 or the one prior, the yoga activities were occurring in the second or third story of the dwelling, and then the yurt was proposed to move those yoga activities to the yurt. Where are those going now?
The yoga activities is only going to be outside now, on the back patio.
Okay, and that's seasonal?
Yeah, exactly.
And then the artist festival, that was contemplated as part of the prior approval?
Yes.
And that's parking, how is that managed? Is that all onsite, or is there off-site agreement?
It's onsite, they also utilize the VFW next door and the elementary school across the street.
And they have how police help with traffic safety?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And photography, so I think there's a note on there that says there's no office onsite, that's just someone comes to like, a graucer-sculptor kind of atmosphere, right?
Exactly.
Takes photos for engagements and things of that nature?
Exactly.
Okay. And then, the Tulip Tree Cafe, I think the prior approval said it's farm-to-table, light fare, and there's, it's not a restaurant, right? So it's, those events that you said the farm-to-table are like, three to four times a year, and it's not, we're having, you know, every weekend, events and activities and...
No, the Tulip Tree Cafe is open regularly. The farm-to-table events are only a couple times a year. Tulip Tree Cafe isn't really, it's not like it's a destination, like you're looking to go out to dinner kind of thing. It's, if you're there, you know, you would have a meal there, or have sandwiches or something along those lines at the cafe.
And the chart indicates, and you'll read into the record, the hours?
Sure.
And I believe, kind of why we, how we got to this was, this is going back two Decembers ago, I think. Mr. Agar, myself met the applicant out at the site, and kind of talked about how we got to formalize and get an application in. There was a couple like, temporary trailers that were just in the stone area in the back, those have since been removed?
Yeah, there's one shed that is on wheels, that's still utilized, and that will relocate depending on events. You know, usually what they do is they'll use that for, the speaker at the event will actually be in there, so they're elevated, and they're out of the sun, and also out of the elements as well. So that would remain.
Okay. And then, you know, I heard Mr. York talk about the 2017 approval in all language about, you know, sustaining the farm use of the property and things of that nature.
Sure.
I think from the board's perspective, right, you know, every use variance approval goes with the land. Are there any contemplated uses that might be outside of what's on this list?
I hope not. I mean, I, my client, I have given my client, I read him the riot act, I don't know how else to put it, and I told him, had he done this the right way, he would have saved the engineering fees, not paid my grandchildren's college education fund, and been in a lot better shape. So we did the chart, so that there is no issue. Now, if he comes up with a new idea, we have to come in and get a new approval.
I just, yeah.
I know what you're thinking.
We tried to look into the future and have it covered in the chart. That's what we tried to do.
It's not fun for anyone to come back every two or three years and take another bite of the apple, so that's why I asked the question. And I just, I think it's important, right, that, I think in the prior approval too, it talks about, you know, these are all farm-related activities, health and wellness kind of activities that are in relation to the farm operations that are going on to the site. When it's starting to be outside vendors that aren't farm-related, that's when, you know, it starts to get a slippery slope beyond, you know, associated with the farm. You know, when does it become just solely a commercial enterprise, not associated with the farm? So that's why we asked all these questions, and that's why I'm happy that the applicant provided this use chart, so. And then, I'll just, a couple, two small questions for Mr. Murphy. So the prior approval, there were some stormwater management improvements to the basin, it was supposed to be expanded, it didn't look like that has been constructed.
No, that's shown, we had discussed, that's shown on our revised plan, you know, the expansion, that'll happen to that basin as part of this approval, provided we're approved. But the plans that are being provided for compliance would show that.
Okay. And then, the only other comment, you know, you heard Mr. Murphy talk about the buffer along the north of the property line, along the right-of-way, you know, ordinance doesn't take, give any credit for the public right-of-way, it is a county road, but there are residences across the street, so they do need the technical relief. As far as the yurt located more subtly into the property, I think Mr. Murphy talked about, there are a couple of properties to the west that are single-family residential, so technically, with the yurt moving back, and the use of the yurt being what it is, not really quasi-commercial, I'd say, there's technically like, a buffer relief for that. I let it's, let's hear from the public, see if there's any concern neighboring properties regarding the location of that, the activities of that. Previously, it was further up to the site, and there was some existing natural vegetation that kind of had that buffer, but let's hear from the public.
Yeah, the yurt's now, rather than being a yoga studio that was originally proposed, it's going to be more, some storage, but also, you know, some of the farm workshops that they have with the kids and adults as well in the area, so it's going to be more related to the farm use rather than the yoga use.
That's all I have.
Okay, Charlie, thank you. Sam?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Charlie's done a wonderful job, that pretty much hit every single one of our comments as well in our paper. I did want to bring up one thing just to the board. So in regard to the counseling, Susan, Mrs. Ediman, our office and Jen Beam, we don't view that as a health and wellness, we do view that as a healthcare facility and medical center. She's doing individually, family and couple counseling, it even says that they do do once a night, one evening night, and to ten to fifteen clients a week. That would obviously be a board determination, but that would, in our opinion, start hindering on, like Charlie alluded to, is it going to become more of a commercial site, is that a farm activity? We do agree with every single one of the other uses can fall under some type of farm activity, including the photography, including the greenhouses and all, even the yoga, but I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention, that that might be where you're cheatering, that kind of counseling. But aside from that, everything else, our letter's been hit, so I appreciate the testimony and I appreciate the board, thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Fellow board members?
Just a quick question, Mr. Chairman. Is there currently any farm activity on the farm?
Seventy-five percent of the site's still farm.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, we do hydroponics, there's planting fields as well, there's, I think it's nine greenhouses out there, there's chickens, you know, there's, yes, it's majority farm.
Yeah, Mr. Murphy, I was here 2017, and I'm not too sure, did we have use for the nighttime activities, because I'm not sure if we did anything with the parking lot as far as nighttime?
Yeah, the prior approval, the hours were nine to nine during the week, and Saturday and Sunday, ten to four. That's remaining the same, it's just that the uses fall within there, not all the uses go for that full-time, you know, the retail store and stuff, that all closes earlier, around five or six o'clock.
And I think it was the census of the whole board, and I was glad to hear you brought up the fact that five-twenty-four they do when they have overflow traffic, that there is concern, because that was our biggest concern, and to hear that's being taken care of goes a long way with me.
Yeah, they have a pretty good relationship with the VFW next door, we try to utilize that more, so no one's crossing the street. But in the large, mostly the art festival, that's the biggest one, they need the elementary school parking.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Hughes?
I'm good.
Mr. Roscoe? Mr. Rebel?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Ryan?
Just for my own clarification.
Yes, sir.
You referenced that the county took ten feet of highway, ten feet of property for the highway. When did that occur, what year?
I'm not sure of the year, I could look into that and then provide that to you when they took it.
Just curious, how much of the items that are up for impact occurred before or after that took place?
Well, originally, the parking lot was at the fifty-foot setback, and now it's roughly forty feet, so it was after the parking lot was approved.
Okay, so it was pre-existing?
That helps it all.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one.
Mr. Barr?
Yeah. If, Mr. York or Mr. Murphy, if we're looking at a sixteen, can you just, what I don't, it's a little hard to follow, is what uses were, are you saying were not previously approved through either the 2013 or 17 resolutions? I think that may be the easier way to follow this, because that's not on the chart.
Sure. The Reiki room, which is the massage and aromatherapy?
Are you going down, if you could just show, like...
Sure, that's within, if you look into the three-story farmhouse?
Two-story.
Our two-story farmhouse building, sorry.
Got it, the sacred roots in Reiki, yep.
Yep, you got it.
Okay.
So that's one. Susan Esteman, which is just below that?
Yep.
Is two. The third one is the farm-to-table dinners, that's, if you look under yard and outside miscellaneous, it's second from the bottom.
Okay.
And the photography, which is the last one, which is at the bottom. They're the only four things that are different from the original approval.
Thank you.
The farm-to-table events, is there live music?
Sometimes there might be a guitar player or something along those lines, we're not talking, you know, the full band kind of sound.
Forty-along and...
No, nothing like that.
I was not playing there, okay.
Well, fellow board members, I think it's time for us to open to the public now.
I'll make a motion, Chair.
We got a motion for Mr. Hughes. We got a second from Mr. Roscoe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, aye, Lee, we're opening to public.
Okay, at this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public who have questions or comments regarding this application. Please step up to the podium, and you will be required to be sworn in and give your name and address.
Look at your shoes. Is there shit around?
Good evening.
Ma'am?
My name is Pamela Hersenberg, I live in Tinton Falls.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so I hope you got it?
I do.
Go ahead.
So I'm an attorney, admitted to practice, I represent small businesses, I do not represent the people at Calgo, but I'm sensitive to small business operations and the responsibility that people undertake to conduct them. I am a second-generation patron of Calgo Gardens. My aunt introduced me to them at their Lakewood facility decades ago, and I followed them from their Lakewood facility to the Howell facility, which I admire very much in terms of how they've improved the property, how they operate the property. I have attended many classes there, including about deer management, which is something that I don't find necessarily available, especially on a consumer level. So, you know, I appreciated the opportunity to learn about how to more responsibly manage my own property, so that I wasn't facilitating deer problems in my own town, which is about twenty-five minutes away from Calgo, so it's not a quick trip that I make when I go to enjoy the facilities there. I've also partaken in, I've had lunch there, I actually... I actually go to the art festival when I have visitors from out of town. I bring them to Calgo. But I'm really impressed about their community responsibility. They, the activities there are oriented toward community engagement and teaching people to be better stewards of their property. And so when I heard that there were some compliance issues with regard to zoning, I can relate to business people having compliance issues because my own clients bump into them from time to time. But I have to say that especially attending the art event there, which is very well-attended and a big event that draws a lot of vendors and benefits a lot of small business vendors, I've been really impressed with the professionalism and the attention to crowd management that's there. And, you know, they're infrequent, but they're well-run. And I think Estemans are good people and they operate the kind of business that Howell should be interested in cooperating with and cultivating. Because other than the county golf course, I don't have a lot of occasions to come to Howell and not much interest frankly. So, but I love their facility and I, I hope that everybody can come to a mutually satisfying resolution of their issues. So thanks very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have anyone else that would like to come up?
Hi, I'm Janice Iwanek. I live in Howell Township.
Could you just spell your last name, please?
I W A N Y K.
And your address?
60 Apple Tree Road.
Thank you.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. I would just like to say that I'm a 40-plus-year resident of Howell Township. And I came tonight because I love Calgo Gardens, everything about it. It's one of the very few places where I participate in a lot of volunteer work throughout the county. A lot of it associated with the League of Women Voters. So we have, we represent all the municipalities in the county. Calgo is one of the very few places where I can get someone from Fairhaven to drive down and have lunch and get together and do something from all over the county. It's, it is a place that draws people to Howell. And too often, as a resident of Howell, I always have to go somewhere else. And I applaud them, their, their property is immaculate. It gives you such a sense of peace. You go there, you have lunch, you shop, you buy plants, you go in the gift shop, you buy, I took my daughter-in-law there for something. But when you leave, you're like, I just wanna live here. It's that kind of a place. And I have a friend who has a phenomenal backyard that they landscaped and, and did all the landscaping and the patio and the pavilion and everything. And it's just a wonderful business. If they did anything and they can correct it tonight, I encourage you to please commend this business to, to grow cause it adds a lot of value to our community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello? I'm Idina Artale and I'm a Howell resident. And I wrote this out as if I'm a kindergartner, but yes.
Spell your name and give us your address, please.
Last name is A R T A L E. And I'm 343 Asbury Road in Farmingdale.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes. Hello, nice to meet everybody. Hi. Shake it out. So, so I would say that I'm definitely one of thousands of people annually who probably stumble upon what Penny and Mark have created at Calgo. I know my life changed forever when I went there and it's because after I left the tulip tree, actually, I told my husband, we're buying a house somewhere in the vicinity so I can come and work from here and bring my kids there and just be part of what they had there. It was unique. There's not much around here that's unique. It's welcoming and I feel love and magic when I'm on their property. They have cultivated and created something that does not exist in many places. And the two ladies that have come up already are so accurate. People will come, I have a girlfriend from Lawrenceville who says, when can we come and have Heidi's tuna with balsamic? They add value. Everyone on the property adds value to the entire community. The warehouses that I keep seeing going up, they do not add value. It takes us all human beings to say, we have it good, we have it easy, but we have to stop. We're hard-wired to hit this easy button, me included, the Amazon button, and it has to stop. They are keeping something alive in our community, something that is real. When you come there, I, I don't know if anybody's ever been there, I encourage you to go there. It changes you. It makes you dream and imagine and it makes you want to create things for other people. I have young kids. I want them to go there and dream. I grew up with immigrants as parents, Polish immigrants. They came here, my dad sweat his butt off every day in his career, driving a truck for 12 hours a day. He didn't want his daughter to be a farmer. He wanted me to go to work for corporate America, get a good job with good benefits. And guess what I did? That's what I went and did. And now I'm 45 and guess what I wanna be? I wanna be a farmer. I have multiple people in my family that have cancer. I volunteer whenever I can, cause I wanna learn to grow food that doesn't have chemicals and pesticides all over it. They put people first. We had a tragedy in my family happen at the beginning of the year. And I came to Calgo afterwards, after Mark kept saying, come on, just come back on site. Just drive in, just get here. And, cause every time you're there, everything changes for you, the way you think, it changes. They give people the chance to try things, to volunteer, to make mistakes, to ask questions. You can ask any of the other proprietors, anybody else that's around that's doing workshops. You can learn so much. They, they tell people to keep trying. They tell people to just try something and create. They have created a supportive, healing sanctuary in every business there. Anybody that's involved in doing anything there, they all have the same mindset. It's about people and community and just doing good things. I don't know all the, all the details of everything. I learned a lot tonight and again, I, I know that nobody is perfect. I just hope that things aren't harder and harder for people like Penny and Mark and the other folks that do business there. Isn't harder and harder to do it, cause how can you keep doing it? Eventually you just get tired, you feel defeated and you're, you're gonna walk away. And we can't lose that. We can't lose this. So please help Calgo keep flourishing and vibrant for our community, for my kids, for your kids and everybody else to come.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anyone else like to come forward?
I had work tonight. I'm Connie Schmidt-Kermin at 459 Adelphia Road. I'm directly across from Calgo.
Can you just spell your last name?
Kermin, K I R A N.
Thank you.
And ma'am, do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do, I do. I've lived there for 20 years. They're great neighbors. Business doesn't bother me. We're literally, we look across the street at the business. I'd rather look at that than houses. So I really would like for you to take that into consideration. They're an asset to the community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jessica Kurzum. I'm a Howell resident at 49 Pickett Place.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Can you just spell your last name for me, please?
K U R Z U M.
Thank you.
My husband and I recently moved to Howell February of this year after a very, very long house search. And to tell you the truth, we weren't sure that we wanted to live in Howell. We were kinda getting to the point where we said, any town else is good enough. We are only about four minutes driving from Calgo, cause we're off of Howell Road in the country village townhomes. And Calgo is one of those hidden gems that has absolutely helped me to fall in love with Howell and say, we wanna be here for a very long time. I'm excited to see how the, they've been growing, even in the short time that I've been here. And I think that this is the type of business that makes Howell kind of the community where I, I want to, I don't know, keep it a secret from everyone in a way. I'm not, it's not the businesses coming onto Route 9 that, that make me proud of Howell. It's businesses like Calgo Gardens. I'm new again to the community, so I'm learning. I don't really fully understand like what the concerns about the counseling and what would have to be done for things like that to be approved. But for the, what I've heard discussed today, like even the greenhouse and, and those, I, I trust that the experts have made their case, but from my small point of view as a resident, I haven't seen any negative impact from here. And, and this is exactly the type of business that makes me proud to be part of Howell.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Cheryl Oliver. I'm a resident of Jackson, New Jersey, 18 Grover Court.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Just wanted to bring a little perspective from a little further outside of Howell. I am the founder and president of the Board of New Jersey Angels, which is a nonprofit chapter of a national organization, serves children and families in the foster care system throughout the state, really working to close the pipeline to prison incarceration, homelessness, trafficking, all those issues that have a foothold in foster care. In our initial year in 2021 of trying to get this chapter off the ground, Calgo Gardens was an incredible supporter of ours, offering their space free of charge for us to host a family-friendly event in October, which we have then done every year and is coming up again this October. You know, you hear that there are some children who have never seen the beach. There are some people who have never seen a farm or a piece of property like this. And some of those children get to come to this event, but it's also an event for the community at large. And it's just family space that's safe. And the kids were happy from all over Howell and different areas to come there and do potato sack races. And just tossing games and, you know, traditional old-school games off their laptops and computers and things like that. And they had a great time every year. So that's something that we're hoping to continue there as well. And I hope that, you know, there can be some considerations again for whatever has transpired, that has been some difficulties. But to allow this property and this place to continue to be a host, again, free of charge. They make no profit off of us being there. They just donate the space to us for the time, so thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Masala.
I'm Dave Vargo, 318 Adelphia Road in Farmingdale.
Sir, do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. And that's V as in Victor, A R G O.
Thank you.
Sure. I totally agree with everybody else who's been up here already tonight. So I just wanna add on to the charitable aspect of what Calgo does. I am on the Board of Directors for Musicians in a Mission. We are a small nonprofit that raises money and awareness for other nonprofits, local nonprofits. And we do so by hosting planned events that use musicians and they donate their time. And we're a pass-through entity, so all the money that we gather for the donations goes directly to the charitable organization minus expenses. And the toughest thing for us to do when we plan events is how do we mitigate the expense part of it? Cause we wanna donate as much as we can. And Mark and Penny have opened up their oasis of Calgo Gardens, free of charge for us, whenever we wanna do an event to raise money for our charities. The staff is great. They're very generous with their time, very giving. And if you haven't been here, it's an incredibly beautiful space. And I think they do more for Howell and for the community than anybody else that I can think of. So please, help them out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to come forward?
Hi, my name's Lydia Santoro. I'm at 49 Bernard Drive in Howell.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. I have a question to ask all of you. Have any of you not been to Calgo Gardens? Have any of you been to Calgo for the wonderful things? Not just to go and check up on them and see what they've done wrong? Have any of you been there for the events, the workshops, the store? Have any of you been there for those wonderful things?
My wife's been to the store a few times.
Who have ever been to any of the, I invite you all.
So I would just have to say like, this is time for your comment.
Okay.
You don't get to cross-examine the board about that kinda thing.
I invite you all. I invite you all to come. Eat at the cafe, walk around, breathe. That's it. That's all you'll need to do. I work with Calgo's social media. This is a wonderful turnout of people, but I will tell you, Facebook, 333 people have commented, 28 shares on the post talking about Calgo tonight. And all we asked was for people to send their good wishes, maybe show up. We kept the post neutral and clean and open. We didn't want to have any negativity towards the council. We said, we know how Howell can be and how easily a positive thing can turn negative on social media. Instagram, I have comments, comments, comments from people, a beautiful place, great vibes. I can go on and on. Many people have already said it. I'm here to say, please, please see this as such a gem in our community. Route 9 is awful. There's no reason to come to Howell. There's no beauty in Howell. Anyone can go to Kohl's in any town. No one needs to come to Howell to go to stores. But people come to Howell to go to Calgo Gardens. So please, please see them for what they do and lighten up a little. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward? Okay, not seeing anyone? Can I have a motion to close the public?
Motion to close the public?
We got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eileen, we're close to public.
Public portion of the hearing is now closed.
Mr. York?
I've been doing this for 53 years. I have nothing more to say.
Okay. So then? I have to open it up to the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
Members of the board, I heard this case in 2017. I may not have been to any events there, but it is a gem. And that was a good wording for that place. A lot of times businesses go through hard times and sometimes we don't always obey by the rules. But you know, in certain circumstances like this, I feel we need to be understanding. And I hear everybody come up here tonight. It's usually a welcome sign for me because I've seen a lot of people in this room that have been against an application. So this was very refreshing to me and I did value everything you all said. Therefore, I have the privilege to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve. We got a second. Eileen, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm really impressed with all the people that spoke positively about Calgo Gardens. I've been there a couple of times to shop, probably will be shopping there more often now and bringing my. now and bringing my wife. Um, I do want to say to the people that said negative things about Howell, Howell is not just Route Nine. We have many nice places in Howell, the Reservoir, Bear Swamp Park. We've done a nice job of preserving a lot of properties for public use. So please, if you haven't investigated all that Howell has to offer other than Route Nine, please do so. And I vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Hughes?
I'd also just like to say it's refreshing to hear the positivity from, from the public. That's wonderful and I lightheartedly say yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes, and I promise I'll be there next week. Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
I vote yes.
Mr. Rebel?
I echo Mr. Orozco's comment. I've never been there, but I'm certainly going to bring my family there now. Yes.
Thank you. And Chairman Seiya?
Charlie, Sam, we want to make sure we get this right. The, uh, the sacred hearts, or the sacred roots, I should say, the Reiki Room, uh, the health and wellness needs to be included as well as the farm-to-table and photography that was not included in the last. Okay?
Correct, and I think, uh, the applicant providing the proposed U-SHAR with, uh, very clear hours of operation and number. Obviously, as the board knows, land use, the approval goes with the land in perpetuity. Use variances go with the land in perpetuity. This just creates a benchmark for how fifty years from now, someone else owns a property and they want to know how they're approved to operate, they know what the confines are of their operations.
Thank you. Sam, you got that, right?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Andy, you have it all?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, with that being said, then, you know, it's approved. And, uh, Mr. York, thank you for the presentation.
One second, Mr. Chairman. You have to put your vote on the record.
I said yes.
Okay, thank you. Brian, are you going to leave them with the mail? I don't need the boards, though.
Yeah, nobody wants the board.
No.
Eileen, can we take ten?
Sure. At this time, the board is going to take a ten-minute recess. They'll be back at eight-thirty.
Thank you.
The zoning board will now reconvene.
So you're not Calgo Garden customers, I assume?
They are now.
Okay, before the board is case number BA twenty-two dash zero eight, Jeff Miller. This is to construct, construct a single-family dwelling on an unimproved street. Application of Jeff Miller as applicant and owner seeking bulk variance relief to construct a single-family dwelling on an unimproved street on block one fifty-four, lot twenty-six dot zero five, Rare Oats Drive. The applicant proposes to clear a portion of the property to construct a single-family dwelling with associated driveway and a detached garage. The applicant also proposes a well and septic system. No improvements are proposed to the existing dirt gravel access driveway. Exploration date, December ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Sir, who do we have here?
My name is Jeff Miller, president of Howell, twenty Ermac Street.
Mr. Miller, um, do you have any professionals that are here to support you?
Bill Jensen.
Engineer. And who's the other?
Um, Brendan.
This is my wife.
Okay.
Do I look official?
All right, so Andy, let's get the professionals sworn in and the, um...
Raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
I do.
Jeff Miller?
Brendan Miller, M-I-L-L-E-R.
Uh, Williamie Jensen, Jr., J-E-N-S-E-N.
Witnesses are sworn in.
All right. Mr. Jensen, you are a, uh...
I'm a, I'll give you my qualifications.
Go, go ahead.
A professional engineer, licensed in the state of New Jersey, uh, graduated from Clemson University. Um, I testified before various boards in Monmouth, Ocean County, and some others throughout the state, and I believe I was here actually last month on a similar application.
Okay, so you are certified and licensed here in New Jersey?
Yes, sorry, yes. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey.
I think you said that. I'm just double checking, you know? All right. So we accept your credentials, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Do we want to go over the engineer's letter or do we want to start with the plan?
Yeah. Okay, so we would like to, uh, build a single-story, uh, ranch, uh, three-bedroom, two-bath, uh, one-car garage, uh, eventually, uh, maybe build a detached, on the plans, it says garage. Really, it's more of a storage shed for outdoor lawn equipment, uh, various things I can't put in a small, single-story, I mean, single garage. I think that's about it.
Okay. So, um, Mr. Jensen, do we want to go over the engineer's report?
I'll, I'll go through a quick description of what we're doing to try to address a lot of the comments and then we'll take some questions.
That's great. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Um, as we discussed earlier before, it's, the property is block one fifty-four, lot twenty-six oh five. It's in the ARE two zone. It's, uh, doesn't front, have any frontage on any existing streets, uh, and it's, it's considered a rare oats drive is where the property is located. Um, it's surrounded by residential properties. Uh, rear oats, uh, sorry, oats drive is, it's actually paved. Thank you. The aerial, uh, rear oats drive, oats drive is an actual paved roadway. It provides access to actually six existing residential dwellings. Would be the seventh back in the flag, our property is back there where it's kind of cleared, where they're going to be doing it, hopefully doing the new dwelling. Um, there's a, a gravel access way that goes through an easement from, uh, oats drive. And you can kind of see it right there. And that was, uh, constructed in like two thousand seven, two thousand eight time when they built the house up in the front, based on aerials and some of the deeds, um, and easement descriptions that the applicant has found and provided. Um, like Mr. Miller said, they're proposing a three-bedroom dwelling. That's a single-story ranch style, detached garage, but it has a single car garage for his wife and the detached structure. We call it a garage, but like he said, it's for storing, uh, equipment and stuff to maintain the property. We've provided, designed a septic system that has been approved by the Health Department. Uh, will be on well. They will get, depending on how the meeting goes tonight, they could apply to get their well permit as well. Uh, the draining patterns currently go from, um, pretty much north to south, which is from the front of the property to the rear and will continue with the proposed improvements. They're asking for relief from section one eighty-eight dash one-one-nine E for providing a hundred fifty foot of pavement where the existing gravel driveway connects to the, to the oats drive is gravel and will remain. However, they are providing, uh, a paved driveway from the existing easement to their dwelling and to the detached garage. And we're also asking for relief, uh, from eighteen, one eighty-eight dash five-one-A as the, as you can see, the property does not front on an existing roadway. Uh, utility services will be extended through the existing easement, uh, for gas and electric. Uh, there will be no change in the drainage patterns and, uh, as indicated or suggested by the board professional, we will provide, uh, roof leader dry wells for the, the drainage system for the dwelling and the detached garage. Typical mail delivery will be down at oats drive where the other existing houses currently have, uh, mail delivery, trash collection, and the homeowner, the applicant, will be responsible for plowing the access easement from the, the gravel driveway from the, the property down to oats drive. That would be his responsibility. And as you, there will be minimal tree clearing for the proposed dwelling and improvements. And there's nothing proposed within the easement except from my understanding from the meeting that the applicant had with the fire department, the fire bureau, they approved, they were okay with what existed there. They just wanted to make sure that trees, branches were cleared up to fourteen feet and the shrub and brushes were cleared back, uh, the width of the, the right-of-way or twenty feet where the roadway, where the access drive, uh, maranders outside of the easement. Um, they have the Freeled Soil Conservation District approval, uh, the Health Department indicated, and the Monmouth County Planning Board is not applicable. It's because the residential, existing residential dwelling and it's not on a county road. Um, I could take questions?
One second. Charlie? On, on the screen here, where's the, where's the proposed house? Show us.
So it's this property to the...
And what's that, what's that right there then, Charlie? That, yes.
This looks like to be a cleared area.
On the, the structure.
To, to, to the left, that structure, yes.
You're gonna have to ask the...
Cars.
That's just... Storage.
Before, or, uh, before?
No, that's now, that was, uh, uh, basically a makeshift shift tent that we had to put various articles that I couldn't keep at our small house in Howell. So it's just basically storage. My wife calls it junk.
So it's residential items and if you get approval from the board to build the structure, these will be stored inside the detached...
They will, they will go away.
Absolutely.
They'll be gone, yeah.
No, it's, yeah, it looks terrible and I get complaints weekly about it, but that's not how it's gonna end up.
It's just temporary. We just didn't have the room where we are now.
So, and, and just to clarify too, right? So, Mr. Jensen, you said the driveway that's, exists from rear oats drive that's gravel, that was constructed in two thousand seven prior to the applicant's ownership of the property?
Correct.
And that existed at, you said that was installed by the homeowner of the front lot that, that actually fronts on oats drive, right?
And the, as you can see by the submitted plans, that some of the roadway maranders outside of the provided easement, uh, might be Plan Sheet Two. And that was based on my conversations with the applicant and the, the property owner. They wanted to make sure that certain trees were not taken down, large mature trees. So when they built the accessway, that's where they constructed it back in two thousand, two thousand eight, two thousand seven to two thousand eight.
So, I mean, this, I'll defer to Mr. Bayer, but there's a valid easement on, on record, but the driveway that provides access to the structure isn't located with easi, within the easement. Um, yeah, I would think that a new easement would need to be, or the easement would need to be amended to fit the meets and bounds of that physically built driveway. So there's no issue or, you know, relocate the driveway so it's within the easement? Obviously, you said it was to avoid clearing trees, so if you can get the amended easement, I think that would be the preferred route.
I agree.
Put it, put it back or like amend it.
Move, are you saying move it?
So they, they're, they're recommending that you be, try and get the, the current easement owner just to modify the easement to agree to where it is now?
Okay.
Or you'd have to relocate it back into where the...
Even though he owns this, the, the whole property, is that, I just want to be on the same page. He, the current owner owns all, all that property, gave up the easement.
Yeah, so the issue is the physically built driveway that exists there since two thousand seven isn't within the meets and bounds, the limits of the easement. So, right, you might have a good relationship with the current owner of that property, but the ownership of that property could change and they could then compel you to...
What about an ASBIL?
Do we have, um, a...
I'll, I'll explain. Can I explain? So the, the applicant actually has, uh, uh, from like two thousand, uh, two thousand fourteen...
That's the one I put in there, Charlie.
It's a variance, it might be highlighted in yellow.
It's an ASBIL, uh...
It's like an ASBIL of where the roadway went through the easement.
It's under exhibits, eight twenty-one.
Eight twenty-one, sorry.
So we, we will confirm that that's...
Uh, the tab up top.
Oh, there it is, sorry. Do I have it open? I have it open, sorry, there you go.
There it is, yeah. And then the signatures are under.
So that's what the, the property owner provided on the next page.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what legally what it means, but...
Yeah, so I guess it would be something, was this, when was this provided? With the last admission, Eileen?
No, today.
I think it was provided today, they have to review it.
Yeah, I think it needs to be, uh, blessed by our board attorney to make sure that it's, uh, it's all copesthetic. I think it's just, uh, from a legal perspective, right? If someone else owns a property in the future, you don't want to get hopped up there like your driveway.
I'll do whatever you require, right?
Yeah, and then it's...
If we need to move it, we'll move it.
And then it's a liability thing too, if there ever is a fire and then fire, you know, because he puts a gate up on your driveway because it's not in the easement, then, uh, you know, it's not a good thing for anyone.
Okay.
Is the driveway within the easement or not?
It's not.
Portions are, but...
The beginning and the, the straight part of the end are, but the big trees are right in the middle, right where it veers off to the left there?
Yes.
And I guess you really didn't want to lose those trees.
But that lighter dash or, or with the dot, that's the propos, that's the existing gravel roadway and the dark dash lines is what the easement was.
Right, so you should probably get the easement amended to reflect the...
Right.
What was actually...
And I, I believe what the applicant was provided was that document, um, so they know that, yeah, we, we understand that and, you know, we agree to where the road is, but again, I think the attorney, the attorney will have to review it.
Yeah, so that's just going to be a condition of any board approval. Um, and then as far as you, you said you took to the fire officials, so, so I have a memo, I think, uh, what's his last one?
It was eight twenty-two.
Yeah.
Twenty-two.
Driveway was at least twenty foot wide, overhead instructions thirteen foot eights. Okay, so just be reminded, uh, the board is actually very honest, it's your responsibility to make sure that you're like clearing vegetation on the sides and then vertically, so if there ever is a fire, they can get up to there. And then also that includes not just for the driveway itself, but once you get to the top, where there's that like half cul-de-sac area, that, that also has to be maintained. You're responsible for snow plowing and all things of that nature. Um...
We could put notes on the plan.
Okay. As far as, uh, they also require relief for the surfacing of the driveway or ordinance as anything over a hundred and fifty feet is required to be paved. Um, it's a existing gravel slash dirt accessway that's been there since two thousand seven. You know, pavement comes with impervious cover and more runoff and this properties are pretty steep, you know? I'll leave it to the board's discretion whether or not you want to see that paved. Um, it would be a significant cost expenditure to, to the applicant, obviously, to do that.
It's a highway.
Um, uh, what else do I have? I apologize. Um, talked about you're going to provide dry wells, uh, the driveway that's existing that's been there since two thousand seven, as far as what's being proposed on the property itself, that's over, it's under an acre disturbance, less than a quarter acre impervious, right?
Correct. Sorry, I, um, I skipped that. Um, we're disturbing only, um, point six-seven acres of the two-point-two-one acre site and it's less than a quarter acres impervious for the proposed dwelling and the proposed driveway on-site.
So I think it's, it's just important the driveway's existed there for some time. They didn't construct it, you know, they purchased the property and the easement as is, so like what they're proposing currently is not a major development. It doesn't happen to Hansburg with stormwater management, albeit they are providing the dry wells, which I think is a positive. Um, that's really it. It's a landlocked parcel, there's an easement, the driveway isn't physically loaded, located within the easement, they just need to make that right.
That has to be fixed, yes.
So...
And just one other thing. And just one other thing, just clarification, there every, all the zoning requirements are being met for setbacks and everything like that on the property. It's just a frontage.
Yes. Sam?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have too much to say. Uh, landlocked properties in general can sometimes be difficult to design. Uh, you know, they have the access, which is positive. I do just want to stress just so your own awareness is the maintenance of that access is huge, you know, uh, it's easily overgrown. You know, just make sure you try to keep that maintained.
We've seen that already with some shrubbery.
Okay, that's all you got, Sam?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you. Board members?
No.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes. Um, I appreciate your time and
We're gonna go to, we're gonna go to public and then we'll, uh, all right, do we have, can we open this to public?
Motion to open, sir.
We got a motion, we got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public who have any questions or comments regarding this application. If so, please come to the podium, give your name and address and you'll be sworn in.
Couldn't have paid one of those other people?
Yeah.
Sorry. Uh, Mr. Chair, motion to close. We got a motion to close. We got a second, all in favor? All right, we're closed to public. Mr. Jensen, give us your summation here, please.
Sure, um, my client is looking to move into the town, build a nice house for him and his wife. Uh, visit the last applications facility prior this weekend. Um, but we're try, they're trying to build a nice house for them, uh, in a tough situation with the access easement the way it is and they're, they're trying to do the right thing. And build it to meet the, the best they can, the ordinances of the town.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
What about the pavement? Where do we have to discuss that?
You know, uh, I'm okay with the, the way it is.
So am I.
All right.
Just wanted to show
Yeah.
As long as they comply with the easement requirements that Charlie
That's what needs, that needs to be fixed, yes. That's all contingent. So.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we grant the, uh, relief that's being requested with the stipulation that they comply with the easement requirements to the driveway. And, um, stipulation that all of the outside items stored improperly outside are moved to be stored inside.
We got a motion. Do we have a second? We got a second. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Oroco?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan? Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
And Chairman Seiya.
Mr. Jensen, please help your client, see all this through, okay? Yes. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, now.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good night.
Twenty three fourteen.
Guess we save the best for last, right? Although I'd say they were probably starting best. Good evening, everybody. I am, uh, Thomas Klein. I'm a Howell resident. I live at twenty Boyce Lane in Farmingdale, New Jersey.
All right, one second, sir. Case number BA twenty three dash fourteen, Thomas Klein. Construct a two-story addition to a single family dwelling on an unimproved street, no street frontage. Application of Thomas Klein as applicant and owner seeking bulk variance approval to construct a second story addition to a single, to an existing single family dwelling on a lot without frontage on an un, on an improved street on block two nineteen, lot thirteen dot zero one, twenty Boyce Lane. The property is currently occupied by a one-story framed dwelling as well as two rear wood decks with associated stairs, a shed and an existing well and septic. Expiration date, January thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Sir.
Yes, sir.
Once again.
How are you, everybody? I'm Thomas Klein.
Thomas Klein.
And I am a Howell resident and I reside at twenty Boyce Lane in Farmingdale, New Jersey. Um, so just give you a quick introduction, my wife and I
Before you, before you go on, who, are you the only one testifying?
No, I'm not. I have my architect with me here today.
Okay, can you both please raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last.
Thomas Klein, K L E I N.
Patrick Lesbirel, L E S B I R E L.
Witnesses are sworn, Mr.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Klein?
So, uh, my wife and I are looking to put an addition onto our home. Uh, we have a growing family. We have two boys right now. And, uh, it's just gotten a little bit tight, so we were looking to expand on it. Um, our house is there with the arrow on top of it, so you guys can see it. Um, there is a swimming pool that is no longer there right now, because we took it down. Um, it's really just moving the bedrooms upstairs, giving us a little bit more living space on the downstairs and putting in a first floor master suite. Um, nothing too crazy about it. It's pretty, pretty simple. Pull up the plans, um. Pat, would you want to take over now or I think it's probably more for the technical guy?
Uh, qualify. Call me.
Yeah, you should go through your qualifications.
Yes.
If you're testifying as an architect.
Correct. I have a bachelor's degree in architecture from New Jersey Institute of Technology. Uh, I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. My license is current and in good standing. I've testified at many boards.
We accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you. Uh, so just a brief walkthrough of the plans. Uh, it's an existing ranch house, um, which is no longer suitable for their needs. Uh, the house has an actually very large garage space, which we now look to include as living space. And then additionally, we'd like to put a second story on the project to allow for a master suite and two bedrooms upstairs. So now referring to drawing, if you go up one drawing. Uh, this shows the proposed floor plans. Uh, so as you can see, uh, we're showing a large game room to entertain their children, a larger, much larger kitchen than currently exists. Uh, two, three bedrooms upstairs and there would be one bedroom on the first floor. Uh, all are normal sizes, uh, for what I would say comparatively to the area. I grew up in the area, so I'm very familiar with the neighborhood and what's going on around this. Um, in regards to just the compliance measures of the project. Um, the subject lot does not front along the improved roadway. Uh, again, the lot is current and existing as a resident for my client. Uh, my client has lived here for now, how long?
Five years.
Five years. He's lived at the site. Um, so again, the change, I, I don't think will have an impact regarding uh, the unimproved street. The property does not have a street frontage. Uh, again, we provided to the board an easement that has been granted for this roadway, that has been existing, uh, at least since his ownership of the property five years ago.
So, Mr. Chair, though, one comment I will put on that is I, I think there was a deed of easement and it, and it, the language talks about the adjacent lot immediately, I think, to the north of the subject property. And there wasn't really like any, like strict meets and bounds description all the way out to the right of way, so I would just ask that our board attorney review that and just make sure that it's acceptable. For the same reason as the last one, right, with the health and safety, that if there is a fire, you know, no one's putting up a gate across there and a fire truck can't get back there. So.
Okay, right, yeah, that would be acceptable if a condition of approval was granted.
Thank you, Charlie. Sam?
Uh, thank you, dear, uh, Chair. Uh, from a planning standpoint, it's an existing property. Uh, there's not too much for us to, to harp on. Uh, I don't see any adverse effects of the improvements.
Uh, applicant should provide testimony regarding inlets, in-law suite and if it should have a kitchen, uh, the client's in full agreement, there'll never be a kitchen and in the in-law suite, it'll just be used basically as a restroom. So that should be just taken off. Uh, the septic system should note the approved for four plans, uh, for four bedrooms, I apologize. Uh, we should provide testimony regarding the five bathrooms. Just due to the size and the length of the house, we have multiple bathrooms across the home. The existing ranch home is extremely long in nature. So, um, we have two, three full bathrooms upstairs, one full bathroom downstairs. I, I don't think that's out of alignment, other than the fourth bathroom, which is located in the bedroom. Uh, I'm sorry, the kitchen on the first floor. I don't think any of this is out of cohesion just due to the length of the home. And I don't think it would have any impact on the septic system that was approved.
I think it's just very important that, uh, what's being contemplated today is a single family dwelling, an expansion to a single family dwelling, an addition with an in-law suite without a kitchen, right? Um, there have been some other properties in town that have been utilized for other activities other than single family. Even though they might have been purchased as a single family dwelling, have been operated otherwise. That's why I asked the question about the five bathrooms. It's a singly family residentially. Applicant owns and resides in the property, right?
Correct, yeah. Then right here, it's for them. Um, and I think that addresses, let me still check. Again, the applicant will provide an ASB survey, of course. Um, all other fees will be paid, any outside agency approvals will be accomplished, so yeah.
Will the septic have to be enlarged? Charlie?
Say that again?
Will the septic have to be enlarged?
Uh, so the applicant already got a septic system approval and actually if you look at the near map aerial, that you can see there's an area back here, I believe that's already been constructed. So, uh, and it was approved for five bedrooms, but the applicant's only, uh, proposing four, so.
Okay.
And then I think it's also important to note, there's like a basement, but it's only a partial basement, right?
Yeah, the basement head height is less than like baby six foot two. It's not really an occup, it could never be used as an occupied space.
So it's like for storage or, you know
If you could even get in there.
Okay, and then the pool, that's one of those like seasonal you put up on a gravel bed.
Pulled out at the end, yep.
Gotcha, okay. Um, I would just say if you have any intent obviously to put in a permit pool in the future, just make sure you come to the town and get the proper permits. We see, uh, a handful every year of like, um, people getting the permits and then don't, not necessarily building them for the approvals, so, uh, just caution you if you ever decide to go to that permanent route. Um, and then, um, similar to the last application officer, just reminding you, it's an access easement, you're responsible for maintaining it. Uh, and as well as anyone else that has the rights to that access easement. Uh, mail, garbage and everything that's out on Farmingdale Road, like a Farmingdale Road. Okay. Um, and then I just had some comments about like the bulk standards. I think you, you used like the flylot standards, but it's not really a flylot. You'll, you can revise that as a condition of your approval.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, there's one minor relief other than obviously the, um, uh, not fronting on an approved street. Uh, I think the one corner of the building kind of encroaches on quote unquote, a front yard setback. It's kind of a gray area here. This is a landlocked parcel. It doesn't have street frontage, so how does it have a front yard area? We treated the front facing side of the dwelling as the front yard. And I think it's, uh, fifty foot required and the addition is, you know, something like, uh, forty three point four feet, so. Um, what I will point out, that front yard area we're talking about is, you know, a wooded parcel, so who really is that impacting?
Got it.
Charlie, on that map, where's this street?
So
The house is on Boyce Lane?
Yeah, so
Yeah.
Adelphia Farm on Farmingdale Road and it's Boyce Lane, so this isn't actually, uh, it's not on our official street map, so it's just a private right of way. Like Google Maps will sometimes show it as a street, but it's not actually a street, so it's a, it's a private right of way or a right of way easement that services a couple of the, at least the two, the applicant's dwelling, the, there's, these lot lines aren't perfectly great. They're like GIS parcel lines. So the lot line, I believe, actually is somewhere like this.
Yep.
Between the two, so this is the applicant's property.
Brown area. Like an inch below the arrow, that's the street.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the gravel driveway. So gravel driveway goes out and I think the, I think it's only
It only services the two houses, right?
Yep. Those are, those are the only two that are serviced by that road and then those two are actually serviced by another, like random access easement that comes off Farmingdale Road.
Got you, okay.
That little, little nuance.
It's an old property.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. You have anything else, sir?
No, just if we have any questions.
All right, stay there for a second, please. Uh, can we open this up to public?
Motion to open a public.
We got a motion and
Second.
We got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Eileen?
At this time, if any member of the public would like to come up and ask questions or comments on this application, please come up to the podium, give your name and address and you'll be sworn in.
Okay, not seeing anyone.
Motion to close.
We got a motion to close and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Eileen, we're closing to public.
Public is now closed.
Okay, do you have a summation, sir, that you would like to?
Uh, not much more to say. Um, you know, we're, we moved into Howell five years ago and started working on this project house and, uh, you know, we really fell in love with the township, you know, very similar to the first and the second year. Uh, we fell in love with it, we walked the property. I took her around the house before we went into the house because it was a little scary. Um, and we said it was the perfect place to raise our kids and that's what we set off to do and we're looking to continue that and be here forever. That's why we put the master suite on the first floor. It's really more for us than anybody else. We don't have to do stairs when we're older.
Very good, sir. Thank you. Uh, so what's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion, uh, to approve this application based on the finding of facts. And, uh, good luck to you and your family.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second.
We have a motion and we have a second, Eileen?
Who did the second?
Mr. Hughes.
Or Rebel.
Thank you.
Simultaneous.
Oh, simultaneous.
I'll take it.
Rebel's taking it.
Rebel.
All right. Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Oroco?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
And Chairman Seiya?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
You're welcome, sir.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Eileen, when's the next meeting?
Hold on one second till I get my tour.
I hope it's in October.
Right now, our next meeting is October second, but as of tonight, I have nothing scheduled, so I may cancel that meeting. And then the one after that would be October twenty third.
October second, okay, um. Yeah, depending on when I get back. I'm flying back from, um, from Illinois that night.
It, there's nothing scheduled right now, so unless Charlie gives me something tomorrow that I can quickly schedule, there won't be time for anybody to notice, so chances are that meeting's being canceled.
All right, and then the Oc, the, the second October is the twenty?
October twenty third.
Okay, got it.
All right.
That makes sense. All right, good. May I have motion to adjourn?
Motion.
We have a, motion and a, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.